No, we're at the gap. Three twenty, five twenty seven. We start at the beginning.
Recording stopped.
The public announcements. Agenda item, what agenda item is public here addressing?
Wait. Hey. Good afternoon, everyone. We will start by hearing.
Recording in progress.
Actually, we have no public comments on agenda items this afternoon. That's what we were just going over. So we will call the meeting to order. And begin with invocation. Minister Sharon Hardman with Ignite Life Center from Little Rock joining us today will lead us in invocation as well as Pledge of Allegiance. But she lives in Pine Bluff.
Good evening, everyone. Praise the Lord also. Let us pray. Father God, we give you honor, we give you glory, and we give you praise. We first recognize you as God of this great city of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Father, in the name of Jesus, we stand in the gap for the leaders in this community, the County of Jefferson, and the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Father, I apply the blood of Jesus over this council meeting on tonight, as well as our Mayor Vivian Flower, her staff, and all of every position that has been appointed and elected. We pray you give your wisdom, your knowledge, your understanding, your might, your counsel, and reverence of you. God, we thank you for giving us godly leaders that will leave this, that will lead this city to greatness. I further pray on tonight that we come together, even if there is a disagreement, that we will agree to disagree. We pray that our leaders will not veer off the foundation of the essence of this meeting and whatever is best for this city. Lord, let the wisdom, let the spirit of wisdom rest on this council meeting on tonight, and Mayor Flowers will make godly decisions so that we, the people of this city, will be able to live a quiet and peaceful life. In Jesus' name, amen. Let us do the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much, Minister Hardman. And now, Madam Clerk, will you please call the roll?
Councilmember Mays.
Here.
Councilmember Holcomb.
Here.
Councilmember Brown.
Here.
Councilmember Lockett.
Here.
Councilmember Frazier.
Here.
Councilmember Brunson. Councilmember Denton.
Here.
Councilmember Fells.
Here.
And next is the approval of minutes. I'll entertain a motion.
So move.
Second.
Mayor, have my correction for the minutes.
Okay. Real quick, it's been moved and seconded to adopt the minutes. And now we will have discussion, and I believe that Councilmember Fells has a correction.
Oh, oh, good evening. It's just a small correction. On page five, it says two hundred thousand, but that figure should actually be one hundred thousand. Yep.
So on page, on page five, in item three, the third line from the bottom referencing two hundred thousand, that will be changed and corrected to one hundred thousand. Any more corrections? With no more corrections, I will ask for a vote. All those in agreement for approval of the minutes indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes approved. And now we will hear from committee chairs for committee reporting. Ways and Means. Councilmember Brown, will you please deliver the report?
Thank you, Mayor. Ways and Means met just before this council meeting. We discussed three different items. Agenda item number three, and that was passed to the full council with a due pass. Agenda item number four was sent to the full council with a due pass. And we also had an ordinance providing of the financial affairs of the Street Department for the calendar year 2021 through 2024. That was sent to the council with a do not pass. And that concludes Ways and Means.
Councilmember Mays.
Thank you. As Chairman of Ways and Means, I'd like to say this. About one of our street, down about a Pine Federal Credit Union, that street's a mess. I think we need to have our street department to go look at that street. That is a street going to our credit union. I mean, it's worse than any street probably in the world. Just saying, if you go into, go down there, if I bring it up, they always trying to downplay it, but that street is bad, and you can't go down there to the credit union, you gotta go all the way around.
Councilmember Mays, what's, what's, what street is that? McFadden Road, is that what you're talking about?
It's called McFadden Road, but they, they pull the signs down where you can't see it. Right there in front of the credit union. They know where the credit union, most people. Pine Federal, Pine Federal Credit Union.
Is that, is that McFadden Road? Or is that Hut, is that part of industrial?
Yeah, the industrial park, yeah.
Okay.
I mean, they got so many deep holes in it, you gotta go down there, twisting and turning, but just saying, we, we have to fix that road. If I say fix it, go fix it. Them guys in Whitehall gonna say no, because it's, it's, it's buttoned up to Whitehall, but it's still Pine Bluff. And we need to stand up and make things happen around here. If you do, if you get a chance, go look at the road. It's just, it's just a mess. And I've been talking about it for a while.
Councilmember Mays. So this is, I guess, my seventh, no, my ninth council meeting so far. And I hadn't heard that, but what I would ask, and I'm glad that you raised it. I mean, anything that needs attention, we need to give it attention. And we do have a very responsive and hardworking street department. And what I would ask is that if you could share any specifics via email or text with our street department director, I'm absolutely certain that he will go look at it and report back to you what the street department is able to do now and later. If you could do that?
Yeah, and I understand that. Man, I understand that.
Well, there's just no other way.
I've been reporting it, and they.
I don't know if you reported it to this director, but all I'm saying is, as a matter of resolution, to get things done, to your point, I think the way for us to handle it is to reach out to our directors for anything that needs to be done and give them a chance to fix it. And so if I could ask for you to do that, I think that we will, we will see some action.
And, and what I'm saying is, that's a vital part of our city, going to the credit union. A lot of, a lot of people go, and they'll go around that big old hole in the road. I mean, and it needs to be addressed. And what's gonna happen is the people in Whitehall wanting to, they gotta go around. They don't wanna go around, so they keeping that hole in the middle of the street. That's what they doing.
Well, right now, I know too that we're in the process of addressing potholes. And while that might not be in the ward that we are addressing right now, I'm certain that. Well, okay, what I, what I was saying is, I'm not sure that we've started with Ward Four, and if we have, then even better. But if you will reach out, I'm sure that we can address it as quickly as possible. Okay. And then, absolutely most welcome, Councilmember Mays. So the next committee is ordinances and resolutions, and that is, and you're on. No, I'm sorry, that actually is. Holcomb, yes. Councilmember Holcomb, if you, you're on. If you could go ahead and deliver the report on that committee.
Thank you, Mayor. We have six, six proposed agenda items. Number one and two are both ordinances. They're up for the third and final reading. Three, four, five, and six are all resolution. They will be completed on tonight. All of you should have in front of you a resolution authorizing the mayor and city attorney to execute an agreement of understanding between the City of Pine Bluff and the Arkansas Department of Transportation respecting the Pine Bluff Main Street pedestrian railroad crossing project job zero two zero eight three seven. I move this resolution be added to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution be added to the agenda regarding the agreement between the city and the Department of Transportation. Any discussion? All those in agreeance to add that resolution to the agenda indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
You can get a roll call.
A roll call? Then get ready to call the roll.
Councilmember Mays.
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett.
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier.
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson. Councilmember Denton.
Aye.
Councilmember Fells.
Aye.
And this will be agenda item number seven. Next resolution, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a supplemental agreement with Union Pacific Railroad Company for work respecting railroad tracks crossing South Main Street, U P R R, Ram's Project seven eight one nine nine two. I move this resolution be added to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that this resolution be added to the agenda. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Mays.
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett.
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier.
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson. Councilmember Denton.
Aye.
Councilmember Fells.
This is agenda item number eight. Next resolution, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Poole's Backhoe and Irrigation Incorporated for irrigation pump replacement at Harbor Oaks Golf Course. I move that this resolution be added to the agenda.
It's been moved and seconded that a resolution be added to the agenda authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Poole's Backhoe and Irrigation. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Mays.
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett.
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier.
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson. Councilmember Denton.
Aye.
Councilmember Fells.
This is agenda item number nine. Last resolution, a resolution authorizing the Economic and Community Development Department to acquire housing units in compliance with the requirements of home A R P grant from U S Department of Housing and Urban Development. I move that this resolution be added to the agenda.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that the resolution authorizing the Economic and Community Development Department to acquire housing units in compliance with the requirements of home A R P grant from the U S Department of Housing and Urban Development. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Mays.
Aye.
Councilmember Holcomb.
Aye.
Councilmember Brown.
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett.
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier.
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson. Councilmember Denton.
Aye.
Councilmember Fells.
Aye.
This is agenda item number ten, and that concludes ordinance and resolution. There's no further discussion.
Okay, all right. Thank you. Councilmember Holcomb, is that the end of your report?
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much. And Councilmember Frazier, will you please deliver the report on Economic and Community Development Committee?
Thank you, Mayor. Economic and Community Development has not met since the last city council meeting, so I have no report.
Thank you. And Councilmember Denton, will you please provide the report on Public Health and Welfare Committee?
Mayor, we did not meet, and hopefully we'll meet again the first Thursday of June.
Thank you very much. We'll look for you to meet on the first Thursday of June. And Councilmember Lockett, will you please report on the Public Works Committee?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The Public Works Committee met on April the twenty ninth at one o'clock in the old city council chambers. We had a report from the Park and Rec Department, and Ms. Holloman gave us a list of upcoming programs that were being executed at the park. And she stated that on May seventh, May fourteenth, May twenty first, and May twenty eighth, there will be jazz in the park, and that would be at Saracen Landing, that they will have jazz artists from six to eight P M. in the month of May. I'm trying to think, that's gonna be every, let me see, Madam Mayor.
Wednesday.
Is it Wednesday?
Yep, yes, sir.
Every Wednesday in the month of May, there'll be jazz at Saracen Landing. She also stated that there is gonna be every, from Monday, let me see, I think on Mondays, they will have Pine Bluff Dance Group. They will be line dancing at Chester Hines on Mondays from five thirty to six thirty. And on Tuesdays, Saracen Landing, I guess they'll also be from five thirty to six thirty. She said they, they are creating a new adult men's basketball league, and it's twenty dollars per team, ten players per team, ten games, championship, all money due by April the thirtieth. So that's, anybody interested in playing basketball in a league-type manner, contact Park and Rec, and that is to be done by the, oh, that's passed. Let me see. Yeah, so. Yeah, that's, that's a little bit past. I don't know if they can squeeze you in or not.
Probably so, though.
But she says on Saturday the seventeenth of May, they'll be back to the Bluff Adult Co Ed Softball. And this will be, I think, a regional park, this will be a regional park affair, and it starts at nine A M. Then lastly, we have the Bobby Lee Terry Memorial Golf Tournament at Harbor, at the J C's Golf Course on May the third. Now, that's passed also. So I hope they went well. But she also, we talked a little bit about safety in the parks, but that was pretty much what we had for Park and Rec. Clean and Beautiful Ms. Kennedy reported that on May the third, on April the twelfth, rather, the Dalloway Area Neighborhood Watch conducted a neighborhood cleanup. On May the third, the University Park Neighborhood Watch conducted cleanup, and want to thank Ms. Kennedy for supplying the, the grabbers, the gloves, vests, and all the things that are needed to conduct these cleanups. It was also stated in the meeting that Ms. Kennedy and Councilmember Fells was working on a massive cleanup for the third ward that was of a, I mean, we said, well, Fells, it was of a comprehensive nature. So they are trying to collaborate with certain partners to make this cleanup of the third ward a pretty comprehensive affair. And then lastly, well, no, the street department reported, we're working on the potholes. I, I hope you all have seen the pothole repairs in the fourth ward, Dalloway and Hutchison, and some of the other areas. We'll be posting those for people to see, and they'll be working throughout the other three wards here with this pothole operation. Now, we also, this committee has stated, Mayor, we wanna get with your office to see if we could do an audit of equipment for the street department so we can start to prioritize what equipment we may be acquiring with the neck, with the next budget cycle.
Thank you so much.
Yes, ma'am. And then lastly, we had Public Works, our Public Works Director, Mr. Matthews, presented four, four items for us to address, and they, they were added to the agenda. We did add them, didn't we? Yeah, we did add them. Seven, eight, and nine, seven, eight, nine, and ten. And Madam Mayor, that concludes my report.
Thank you so much, Councilmember Lockett. And next, Councilmember Fells, will you please report on the Development and Planning Committee?
Development and Planning, we will be meeting on May the fifteenth at four o'clock P M., and the public is invited to attend.
Great, thank you so much. And Councilmember Brunson is not here this evening, and so we will go on to Councilmember Holcomb. Will you please report on the Administration Committee?
Yes, ma'am, Mayor. Administration Committee meeting will meet next Tuesday, which is May the thirteenth, at one P M. That'll be in person and Zoom.
Thank you so much. That's the end?
Yes, ma'am.
All right. And Councilmember Brown, will you please report on the Public Safety Committee?
Thank you, Mayor. Public Safety has not met since the last council meeting, but we will have our monthly meeting on Wednesday, May seventh, one thirty, in the old council chambers. And all council members should have a copy of the monthly report that Chief Compton handed out to us just before the meeting. This is for April twenty twenty five. So if you have any questions about anything in the report, you can let myself or Chief Compton know, or you can actually attend the Public Safety Meeting on Wednesday. And that concludes my report.
Great, thank you so much, chairs and council members. So next, we will go down to proposed ordinances and resolutions. Councilmember Holcomb.
Agenda item number one, an ordinance amending section two dash one for one of the Code of Ordinance of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, to authorize municipal government to make electronic payments and related purposes up for the third and final reading.
Councilmember Holcomb, if you would allow us to hold that over until the next meeting, we have actually reached out, Madam Clerk and myself, to the Arkansas Municipal League, who are assisting us with the proper amendment to this resolution.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you so much.
Agenda item number one has been pulled. Agenda item number two, a ordinance to close a portion of the East West Alley located in the thirteen hundred block, East Harding, between Pennsylvania and Ohio Streets, up for the third and final reading.
An ordinance to close a portion of the East West Alley located in the thirteen hundred block of East Harding between Pennsylvania and Ohio Streets.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Sorry. It's been moved, there's been a motion and a second to adopt this ordinance and up for the final reading. Is there any discussion? No discussion? All of those in agreement with adopting this ordinance? Indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's adopted.
Agenda item number three, a resolution amending the twenty twenty five municipal budget as regards the grant fund.
Whereas pursuant to ordinance number sixty eight forty nine, a change or adjustment to the municipal budget requires the action to be memorialized by ordinance or resolution, depending upon which form was used to approve the budget. And whereas twenty twenty five municipal budget was adopted by Resolution number forty eight forty nine, and whereas it is necessary to make an adjustment and change the budget as described and detailed in the attached three pages, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section One, the adjustments to the twenty twenty five municipal budget set out in the attachments, which affects the grant fund, is approved. The particulars thereof, as detailed in the attachments, are incorporated herein as if fully set forth word for word and number for number. Section two, that the twenty twenty five municipal budget adopted by Resolution number forty eight forty nine is amended to incorporate the adjustments and changes set out in the attachments. Section three, the Finance Department will ensure that the budget is implemented as amended.
Move for adoption?
Second.
Yeah, I wanna go ahead and just clarify this. There was a, a correction that was made from what was in your packets, and then you should have a corrected version on your desk, and it just had the travel expense amount incorrectly placed in the consulting budget and vice versa, and that has been corrected. It's been moved and seconded that Resolution, which one is this? Resolution number three be adopted. Any discussion? Councilmember Frazier?
This is the tree grant, right? Mr. Harris, are you here in reference to that tree grant? This grant? Okay, did you, did you wanna? Okay. I didn't know if you wanted to say anything about it. That's, that's all, that's the only reason I asked. Okay. Very good.
Yeah. Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that Resolution number three be adopted. All those wishing to approve indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion's been adopted.
Agenda item number four, a resolution appropriating funds from the restricted reserve account for payment of jail expenses owed Jefferson County, Arkansas, and related purposes.
Whereas pursuant to the judgment of the Jefferson County Circuit Court, as affirmed by the Arkansas Court of Appeals, also with other monthly accruals, the city owes Jefferson County the sum of nine hundred ninety-three thousand four hundred and seven dollars and eighty-seven cent through March thirty first, twenty twenty five, for jail expenses. And whereas city ordinance mandates the city maintain an emergency reserve fund with a minimum balance of five million dollars, with the current balance in this account as of April twenty twenty five exceeding eight million dollars. And whereas it is in the interest of both the city and county that this debt is paid in full without, without unnecessary delay from the restricted portion of the reserve fund. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, Section One, there is hereby appropriated from the city's emergency reserve fund the sum of nine hundred ninety-three thousand four hundred seven dollars and eighty-seven cent for full payment of the judgment, interest, and accrued jail expenses due Jefferson County, Arkansas, up to and including March thirty first, twenty twenty five, Section Two. The judgment document filed with the Circuit Court, which reflects the amount due Jefferson County of County of $407,007.04 accrued interest on the judgment in the amount of $20,243.72 calculated at 5% per annum on the amount thereof from the date of filing through March 31st, 2025, and the printed invoices from the Jefferson County Sheriff's Office and, and jail in the amount of $570,360 for additional jail costs shall constitute sufficient documentary evidence for payment. Section 3, the mayor, in coordination with the city attorney, shall ensure delivery of full payment of this sum to the county, county's attorney or other designated representative, obtain a receipt for the payment, and ensure that the judgment against the city is officially designated satisfied of record.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that Resolution Number Four be adopted. Any discussion?
Yes, Mayor.
Councilmember Brown?
Okay, so I know this is coming from the restricted reserve. So I guess I'm assuming at this point in the year, we probably don't have another source that we could pull it from other than the restricted reserve?
That is correct.
Okay. And then moving forward, so this is basically catching us up to where we should be, but moving forward, how much would that cost us, I guess, in the future? Is this something that we need to?
It, it depends. There, Chief Warrior has met with Sheriff Woods, and what we've done is looked at not only placing any of our misdemeanor offenders, who would go, who would be remanded to jail, until they're hearing, not only in Jefferson County, but looking at other counties where it would make sense. Some cost less than others, but they might have certain criteria, like some don't take women or juveniles. Some won't take people who are sick. Some won't pay, take people who have mental illnesses, which I didn't know that could be done. But so we're looking at all of our options, and there's no one set price yet, but I'll, I'll try to have that information for you. Because as you know, we had had issues in placing those who had been charged with misdemeanor offenses, and we really hadn't had that many people going. But since we are looking to utilize all resources, I really suspect we're going to have to look to see what that looks like in the first month, and then report back to what it's looking like with an uptick in, you know, knowing that there will be an uptick in what we're able to do.
Right. So there's, so there's not really an automatic set amount that we pay. It's just based on the number of detainees that we?
Yeah, because, I mean, all of this is new. Before, we had a certain number of beds reserved, and we didn't have to pay anything.
Right.
So all of this is very new, and we'll have to see.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Councilmember Fells?
I do understand these fees do have to be paid, but I don't, I can't support this resolution at this time, only for the reason that I believe that the emergency reserve fund, this is a fund that should be reserved for like critical emergencies. For example, like if, you know, we couldn't make payroll, or there was a natural disaster, and we had to pay for a cleanup operation. I think it should be reserved for expenses where it absolutely has to be paid in an immediate timeframe. And I believe that these fees have been outstanding for quite a few years. And so my question for you, for the city would be, would it be possible for us to talk with the county, maybe see if we can negotiate a payment at a later date, maybe like next year, when we do get our additional carryover, so we can budget that out? And then also, will we be able to budget, you know, get on some type of payment plan? Because I just think if we've had these fees outstanding for several years, and now we're about to take a million dollars out of our reserve, I just think there's a better strategy we could execute.
Well, I mean, that's definitely something we thought about, but it, they've been outstanding and looming and, and increasing over several years, but don't forget that we're paying interest. And the, I think the difference between then and now is, you know, there was, there's a lawsuit, and we lost the appeal. So, you know, we, first of all, Jefferson County doesn't have to negotiate for us to make payments. But the other thing, I think the reason that we're looking at this is, is that it is an emergency situation in that we are obligated to make these payments, and if we want to move forward and be able to work with Jefferson County so that we can start utilizing jail space, I think that we have to do our due diligence. And I think the other point that's made in the resolution is that our current ordinance code requires that we have at least $5 million in our restricted reserve, which we are well over $8 million. So my, I, I think the, you know, it hurts to even have to do this and to ask for this to be done at this time. At the same time, it's not like we can look at any of the existing expenses and just cut, you know, because it's such a large amount. And because it's such a large amount, and, you know, there would be interest added, I don't know that making payments over time would be beneficial to the city. We would end up paying more over time.
So if I could just make a couple of points. I am looking at the interest that we do, now, this whole entire $9,000, $900,000 payment, the only interest that we have is about $20,000, and that's what we've incurred after all these years. So I think if we were to hold off till next year, I don't think we would be adding a substantial amount of interest. And then also, I do know that we will have to start paying for this space. So I'm not objecting to us finding the money this year and starting those payments, but I just think $900,000 in one go, and it's coming from our reserve fund, that's something I don't support. And I don't see it being an emergency if we haven't at least engaged the county to see if they will be willing to negotiate a later payment date. And also, I know that we're saying that, you know, we have $8 million in the emergency fund right now, and the minimum balance is $5 million. But we know if there's a major emergency, and we have to pay payroll or cleanup operation, that money could go very quickly. And so I just think when we're pulling funds from this reserve fund, we need to be extra cautious and really asking ourselves, is there an immediate need for us to pay for this now? And especially with a cost like this. So like I said, I just, I just think we should at least ask the county if they can negotiate a later date, and let's just revisit this. But that's just my opinion.
Thank you. Councilmember Mays?
Yes, Chairman. Chairman Fells, I agree with you 100%. I don't think there's no rush. This is coming from, what's the total on all that? How many million is that? What's the full total?
The total is not, it's 993,000.
But you got four or five numbers in there, so.
No, there's one total.
All right. I'm like, Chairman Fells, I think they should negotiate it a lot cleaner. And I don't think we need to rush and spend our money for, from our taxpayers like we own it. You know what I'm saying?
Well, I will say this.
Let me finish.
Okay.
Let me finish. Now, let me finish. I think we need to come to an agreement with them, you know, to, to make it easy on our taxpayers. We just can't spend money like this. And if you look into it, they want to rush it. Everything they do within the county, they just rush it. Especially when it comes to the City of Pine Bluff. And we need to just stop that now.
All right.
I, I just would like to respond before we move on to the next comment. You know, this is not about arbitrarily rushing anything because of the county. We were engaged in litigation. We lost in an appeal, on an appeal. There was no viable Supreme Court appeal. We owe the money. We have the money. And rather than pay any interest, whether it's $10 or $20,000, and I'm not sure that that interest bears out over the full timeframe in which this, these dollars start accruing, started accruing. I can't say that. All I know is if we have the money, and it's for a critical need such as this, this is not something we want to play with in that a court has told us we owe this money. There's no question as to whether or not we owe it. We have the money, and I think rather than paying interest over time and kicking the can down the road after owing this money for so many years, and the possibility that we will accrue more debt by utilizing that and other jails, we need a clean slate so we can move forward and figure out what that liability will be instead of having this hang over the head of the city. Councilmember Brown?
Thank you, Mayor. I was just going to say that if we were going to pull that large amount from that account, from that restricted reserve, that we should at least make plans in the next, I won't say do it all in one, one budget cycle, but probably in the next two budget cycles, plan on putting that back.
I fully agree.
Yeah, make a commitment, you know, to put roughly $500,000 in the 26 budget, and then $500,000 in the 27, just to make sure that we at least get back to where we were in the restricted reserve account.
I fully agree, and I'm committed to that. And I think too, as we anticipate an increase in revenue, once the, both of our hotels are open by this time or so next year, we can anticipate a little wiggle room to be able to do that. And the other thing is, you know, with the carryover that we just passed, of course, that, we could have used that, but there are priorities that we set, whether it's the training facility for our fire department, whether it's the forensic dollars reserved for the forensic audit, or dollars reserved to purchase 100 new cameras. I mean, just in those areas, that, we could pay it then. But we have these restricted funds for emergency and serious expenses such as this. We, we, a court, a higher court in the state told us that we owe the county this money, and I, and so that's where I'm coming from. But to your point, I, I agree that over the next two budget cycles, 26 and 27, we can restore this, and we may be able to restore more as well. Councilwoman Frazier?
And I just want to say, I do think we need to clear the slate and pay this bill. I'm not exactly happy about, and I assume all of us are not happy about taking it out of the emergency reserve fund. Once we do this, going forward, what line item are those bills going to come out of? Because I don't want us to keep pulling, once we pay this lump sum, continuously pulling from the emergency fund.
I don't, I don't think that will happen. And like I said, because this is new, and because this was a change, I think, placed upon us, which was the very cause of the lawsuit in the first place, we'll have to see and budget from there. But I think if we just look at what the first number will entail, what the first month of expenses will entail, we can plan from there. And there are certain areas where I think we've been very conservative in how we are budgeting to make sure that we have dollars. And like, I could point to a couple of areas where we reserve some funds that, at this point, I don't think we'll be using. So if we can just kind of give it a month or two to see where we are, and I will be sure to maintain communication with you all before we come back to the table to figure out where we might do a budget amendment to address that. Because a whole nother issue is that, you know, a lot of people have noticed and complained, and we know that for a lot of reasons, whether we're looking at, you know, offenders from the copper theft or other misdemeanor offenders have not been remanded to jail the way they should have. So we've got a sort of double challenge in that now there's an expense for something we didn't pay before. We do have other options because we have done our due diligence to see what all of our resources are, so that we're not stuck anymore by saying that, getting to a point where our, our officers are going through the process of filling out a report and, you know, apprehending someone, and then they get to the jail, and it's like, well, we, we can't, we don't have any beds. So we're, we're working that out. And I just think if we take a couple of months, let's see where we are, and then we can plan from there. I think we'll be in good stead.
Okay.
Mayor, I have one more question.
Councilmember Fells?
So I understand we have an obligation to pay this. Now, has the court issued like a hard deadline saying it must be paid by this certain date? And if they have not issued that, what would, would the city be able to reach out to the county and say, for example, can we make this whole lump sum of this $900,000 payment, let's just say March 1st, 2026, or something, once we get our carryover? Because if we got $11 million in our carryover this year, I'm pretty sure we'll have enough to make that lump sum payment next year. Now, the county may come back and say, we're not going to do that. Okay, we can have a discussion at that point. But I think we should at least try before we say this is an emergency, and we start drawing down our $8 million.
To, to your point, I think, I would say to that, rather than try to not pay them what we know we owe them, if we are anticipating that we will have quite a bit of latitude, I think we can just take that $1 million next year, if we have that in carryover and prioritize to place it right back there with interest. I mean, I think that's something that we can do. But again, I'm just committed, I haven't done that because for me, I felt that it was important to get this lawsuit behind us, keep it from hanging over our head, not incur any more interest. Go ahead and pay it, and then we can restore our, our restricted reserve with that and more. Now, that's my position, which is why I did not engage a conversation about making payment plans. Now, I mean, that's just where I am. If you, if, if the vote is such that you all insist that we do that, and you all think it would be better to go that route and pay interest to do it, then we working together, and that's what I'll do. But I did not do that for those reasons. Councilmember Lockett?
Madam Mayor, I, I'm in support of paying the whole amount. We have been in litigation for six or seven months, I mean, six or seven years.
Years.
And the county is a great partner. The mayor, I mean, the sheriff is a great guy that we lean on to do a whole bunch of things. I really want to clear this up so we could have a clean slate with the sheriff and be able to collaborate like we should. I, I never really liked the idea of suing the county over bed space, and it made me feel a certain kind of way because it looks like, you know, we kind of taking advantage of them because everybody else in the county has been paying, and we've been the only municipality that has not been, been paying. And so I'm in favor, I'm so grateful that we have the money in the reserve.
Absolutely.
We still will have two more than what is required. So it, it's a blessing that we have money that we could pay something like this. But I just think that it would repair some relationships with the county in relationship to how we do business, and I'm all in favor of paying it all at one time.
Thank you. Councilmember Lockett? I mean, I'm sorry, Councilmember Holcomb?
I concur.
Councilmember Mays?
Just saying, I mean, if anything, make, make payments on this, you talking about a million dollars. I mean, we're supposed to be working together, and with, with the city and the county. Now, they just can't just, every time they look around, they want a million dollars out, out, out of money, just out from our citizens. Every time, and it's no $10 or $5 things. These are million dollar moves. And we need to respect our citizens. That could go to road repair, at least half the money, and then pay the half later. I mean, you don't have to, they not hurting for no money, but they trying to rush us to pay the county. And I think that's wrong, you know, for our citizens to do that.
Thank you, Councilmember Mays.
Can I talk to the city attorney? Is that fair? Can we call for that vote?
Okay, we're going to go ahead and call the vote.
No, 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 let me get up here.
But, but the council, the city attorney doesn't speak to whether or not something is fair. The city, the city attorney speaks as to whether or not something is legal or constitutional.
Is that right, city attorney?
That's correct.
Okay. So with no further discussion, the motion has been made and seconded. So, with no further discussion, the motion has been made and seconded. All those indicate approval of resolution number, what is it?
Four.
Four, thank you. Madam clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Mays?
No.
Councilmember Holcomb?
Aye.
Councilmember Brown?
Aye.
Councilmember Lockett?
Aye.
Councilmember Frazier?
Aye.
Councilmember Brunson? Councilmember Denton?
Aye.
Councilmember Fels?
No.
The motion passes.
Agenda item number five, a resolution appointing Leslie Woods to the Pine Bluff-Jefferson County Port Authority.
Whereas the term of Jack Atkins as one of the city's members on the Pine Bluff-Jefferson County Port Authority has expired, but he has continued to serve pending replacement. And whereas the mayor has elected to appoint Leslie Woods to the board to succeed Mr. Atkins, subject to council approval, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the mayor's appointment of Leslie Woods to the Pine Bluff-Jefferson County Port Authority Board to serve a term to expire October 31st, 2027, is hereby approved and confirmed.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number five. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those in agreement to adopt resolution number five indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion's adopted. And I do believe that Mrs. Woods was not available to attend tonight, but she happily accepted this opportunity to serve in this capacity, and we thank her. And then we also thank Mr. Atkins for his service.
Agenda item number six, a resolution appointing Colonel Nathaniel Todd to the Pine Bluff-Jefferson County Port Authority.
Whereas the term of Rhonda Dishner as one of the city's members on the Jefferson County, Pine Bluff-Jefferson County Port Authority has expired, but she has continued to serve pending replacement. And whereas the mayor has elected to appoint Colonel Nathaniel Todd to the board to succeed Ms. Dishner, subject to council approval, now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the mayor's appointment of Colonel Nathaniel Todd to the Pine Bluff-Jefferson County Port Authority Board to serve a term to expire October 31st, 2027, is hereby approved and confirmed.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number six. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Mays?
Yes. Welcome, Colonel Nathaniel Todd, retired Colonel Nathaniel Todd. And I'd like to see retired put on his, in his resolution as well. He carries the, the name of retired Colonel. Am I right? Well, so if we can add retired on there, but welcome.
Well, just in terms of his, his title though, he's still a colonel.
Right.
Even though he's retired. So we can go ahead in terms of the language in the resolution and leave it, leave it as it stands.
Mayor, may I say something?
Councilwoman Frazier.
I would like to say that I'm so excited when I saw Colonel Nathaniel Todd's name on here, because I have been working with him for almost a decade now, and he really loves the city of Pine Bluff. And he goes out of his way to make sure that whatever he can do, he will do for our city. So I'm grateful to have him on this board, and I look forward to what is to come. Thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Any further discussion? Okay. And normally we have your, the bios or resumes of those, and I just wanted to make sure everybody got a copy of Nathaniel Todd's bio, which is of course,
Outstanding.
Both of our, both of our appointees are very impressive. But I just wanted to make sure you had that. Okay, with no further discussion, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt resolution number six. All those in agreement to make this, to approve this resolution indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It has been adopted. Thank you. Colonel Todd, will you please stand? And maybe if you have time, had you planned to stay for the entire meeting or no?
Yes, like I said, thank you, Mayor.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Mayor Flowers, and each of the council members, and the citizens of Pine Bluff.
You might as well come on over here or something. Come on to the mic.
Mayor, thank you. I'd like to say, before I was Colonel Todd, I was Nathaniel Todd from Pine Bluff, Arkansas. And I'm always proud of that. I want to thank Mayor Flowers and each of the council members for this opportunity and the citizens of Pine Bluff. Our port is a key asset to our prosperity, not only Pine Bluff, but our area. And I look forward to serving with each of the authority appointees in the future. Thank you, Mayor Flowers.
Thank you so much for your service. And I'd also, as you take your seat, I'd also like to recognize CEO Allison Thompson. She is the CEO for the Chamber and the Alliance. And many people don't know that the Alliance actually staffs the Port Authority. And if you could kind of raise your hand. Thank you so much.
Agenda item number seven, a resolution authorizing the mayor and city attorney to execute an agreement of understanding between the City of Pine Bluff and the Arkansas Department of Transportation respecting the Pine Bluff Main Street Pedestrian Railroad Crossing Project Job 020837.
Pedestrian crossing over the Union Pacific Railroad tracks. And whereas the city has been awarded Transportation Alternative Program funding to assist in paying for the project. And whereas it is necessary for the mayor and city attorney to sign an agreement of understanding with the Arkansas Department of Transportation to receive funds and return the document to the department within 60 days of April 16th, 2025. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the mayor and city attorney are authorized to sign and append an agreement of understanding between the City of Pine Bluff and the Arkansas Department of Transportation, and ensure it to be, it is returned to the department within 60 days window specified. The city pledges to fulfill its obligations and appropriate the matching funds in compliance with the agreement. The mayor, city attorney, and city clerk, as needed, are authorized and directed to execute such other documents as required to ensure receipt of the TAP funds and satisfy the city's obligations under the agreement.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number seven. Any discussion? No discussion?
No, Madam Mayor.
Oh, I'm sorry. Councilmember Lockett.
Madam Mayor, as point of information, Mr. Matthews came to me some weeks ago with this, and he brought it before the committee. It wasn't our design for it to just hit the, the council, council's packet on tonight. So I'd like him to come up and kind of explain this to us in, in simple terms.
For sure.
Because this is the first time that the council has seen this legislation, but it's the type of legislation that we need to move on that it just couldn't wait to the next meeting. Mr. Matthews.
Good afternoon, Mayor, City Council. We apologize once again for having to bring this resolution from the floor. The timing in which we got the documentation that's required and briefed the mayor on it, as well as coming to the committee to, to brief them on it, that we had the contract. It's been on the council's plate ever since last year when we submitted. We gave a report that we received the grant. The documents came in after we gave the report. We needed to get this on the council, there's a timeframe involved with getting this back to the Highway Department. We knew it was a given that we were going to accept it. The tie-in was, the next resolution that's coming in, the railroad is needing us to sign the contract for them to do the work in the right of way. And they are pressing the city to get it back to them. We couldn't move forward with that contract until we got this contract approved. So that's why we pushed it to get it on the floor tonight so that we can move forward with getting both of these contracts out and back to the prospective individuals.
Councilmember Mays?
So when is the start date? And when are they planning on finishing?
We, we hadn't made it that far. We get the contracts back, the railroad will be doing the work. So it's going to be on their time schedule because it's, it's on their railroad. Department of Transportation has given us the grant in order to pay the railroad for the work to be done. Once we get the contract back, the railroad will be meeting with the Arkansas Department of Transportation, as well as myself, with a timeframe so that the city will know when all this will take place.
Councilmember Lockett?
Okay, we're going to keep you up here for a minute, but could you explain to the council the relationship to item number seven, which is with the Department of Transportation? And then item number eight, it seems to be with Union Pacific itself.
Yes. The grant will actually help pay Union Pacific for the work that's going to be done at the crossing. It's, it's part of the Main Street Streetscape project. So we're, we're moving right along. We're about 70% on the Main Street Streetscape. They are working their way through the project. Hopefully, we'll be completed within the next 60 days. At that point, we will fall back to the railroad for them to come in and do their improvements, whatever timeframe they give us, and the project will be complete. It will be the last favorable Streetscape project that we do.
You say it'll be completed next 60 days?
We, we should be through with the Streetscape project, of which we have contracted out, within the next 60 days.
Okay.
And then, once they complete that, then it'll be on the railroad to come in and, and do their construction.
Reason why I ask that, because I get asked that question a lot.
Yes, sir. The rains have really pushed the project back quite a bit. I'd say at least four weeks. So they're making up good time now, and we're, we're moving ahead.
Okay. If there's, if there's any, any more bad weather, what, what, what's the projected time?
At this point, we've done most of the demolition work. We're just about ready to start pouring concrete finishing up the east side of Main Street between 6 and 8. We just have to complete the final demolition work on the west side. So hopefully, we'll move along. If we get the kind of weather we've got, we, we may even beat that 60 days.
Okay. All right.
Yes, that closed? Okay. With no further, with no further discussion, the motion has been made and seconded to adopt resolution number seven. All those in agreement indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Council, oh, okay. The motion has been adopted.
Agenda item number eight, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a supplemental agreement with Union Pacific Railroad Company for work respecting railroad track crossing South Main UPRR Rounds Project 781992.
Whereas part of the city's downtown revitalization efforts requires some modifications involving the Union Pacific Railroad tracks crossing South Main Street. And whereas the city and Union Pacific have previously executed an agreement dated June 15th, 2022, concerning the work on the project, which now requires certain modifications provided by the supplemental agreement as detailed in Exhibits A and B, there are two. And whereas this supplemental agreement with Exhibits A and B should be executed by the city so work can proceed without undue delay. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the mayor is authorized to execute the attached supplemental agreement with Exhibits A and B with Union Pacific Railroad Company for purposes set forth therein, and ensure the city's obligations as set forth therein are carried out.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded that resolution number eight be adopted. Any discussion? With no discussion, all those indicate by saying aye, in agreement?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Agenda item number nine, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Poole's Backhoe and Irrigation Incorporated for irrigation pump replacement at Harbor Oaks Golf Course.
Whereas after public solicitation forbids to perform the work and provide the materials for replacement of the irrigation pump at Harbor Oaks Golf Course, the firm of Poole's Backhoe and Irrigation Incorporated submitted the only bid. And whereas the bid is responsive to the specifications published for the work, the firm is capable of doing the work, and the bid amount is reasonable. And whereas a contract should be executed with the firm to complete the job. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the mayor is authorized and directed to execute a contract with Poole's Backhoe and Irrigation Incorporated for replacement of the irrigation pump at Harbor Oaks Golf Course on terms consistent with the bid specifications and the bid submission, and for the consideration of $78,650 and other terms standard in the field for this, work of this nature.
Move for adoption.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution number nine. Any discussion?
Yes.
Councilmember Lockett, and then Councilmember Mays.
I'd just like Mr. Matthews just to explain this project. It's been on the table for some time. Could you just explain what this really entails, and also the connectivity part that we had talked about in committee on how we're going to make this project a little more economical than was actually quoted previously?
Actually, this project, we started looking into it right before Mayor Flowers came in from the former director. The pumps that runs the sprinkler system for the golf course is completely down. We, we done some investigation. The pumps have been there, they are the original pumps ever since Harbor Oaks were there, they just gave out. We solicited bids to replace the pump. Mr. Poole, who is a reputable person who has worked for various golf courses, submitted the only bid. He is qualified to do the project. We're trying to get this pump replaced before the dry weather start hitting, and the greens need to be watered in order to keep the golf course looking as well as it look. We do have a second part to that. Also, the power line that serves the pump station, the pump station sits about 1,400 feet from where the golf course is, where it's connected to. We will have to replace that line as well. We are still working on a remedy to replace that. Entergy wants to charge the city $92,000 to come out and do it where they're bored in. Everett Utilities wants to charge 102. We think we have a plan where we can work with the personnel within the Parks and Recs Department to replace that line at, at least half of that cost or less. So we did not bring that portion to the council tonight. We're going to bring it at the next meeting. We're still getting our numbers together. So we will bring it as a budget adjustment, once we get the mayor's approval, as well as Gina finding the money. We, we'll bring it in, and we will ask for that. Reason we ask for this tonight, there's a six-week back order on the parts for the pumps. So we want to get those pumps ordered, have them ready, so when we go in, we do the work, we do it all at one time.
Councilmember Brown?
And so the 78,000, are we already budgeted for the repair? Or is that fund, is it already in a fund somewhere, ready to go? Yes. Yes. Okay. All right. And how about the 50,000 or 60,000 for the electrical?
No, we, that's the part we're searching for, and it's more like 35.
35?
More like 35.
Okay. I was just trying to see if we can get a, get a nod from the finance director.
I think she's still searching unless she's found it. I know the mayor was working with, with finding that money.
I already know where we going to get it from. We're good.
And you said it's 35?
Yes.
She said 35,000.
Yes, sir.
So how old are the pumps we got? And, how old, what we dealing with?
Harbor Oaks was built in, what, 78, maybe 47? I'm not quite sure today. It's been there ever since Harbor Oaks has been there. It came as a part of, of the golf score. Yeah. We, it, we've got our money's worth out the existing pumps.
And I just want to say, we passed legislation not too long ago stating that anything that comes before us with funds, that we need to make sure that we state where the funds are coming from in that legislation. So I just want, going forward, we need to make sure that we have that listed.
Yes. When we come back with the budget adjustment, we will found the money and know where it's coming from.
So will that complete the project?
Yes, it will complete that portion.
Is that up under the ground or on top? Where is it?
It's underground. Well, the pumps are above ground. It sits off to the north of Harbor Oaks, a little small building out there. It houses the pump station. Always wondered what that building was. I found out.
And just to stay in keeping, Councilmember Brown just brought this to my attention. Just to stay in keeping with the current law that we just recently passed, could we, can I entertain a motion to amend the language so that the resolution reflects that the funds that we will be using were passed and obligated in the carryover?
Yes, Madam Mayor, I move that we amend the current resolutions to read that the seventy-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty thousand dollars was previously budgeted in the twenty-twenty-four budget, which was carried over into the twenty-twenty-five budget as stated in the resolution that carried our funds over. And if legal could get that resolution number, I think it was forty-nine, I think it's stated in the previous, let me see, what we got? It's before us because there's a budget adjustment here in this legislation that we passed. Let me see, which number was that?
Madam Clerk has it, but in the appropriate.
Yeah. So we could put that appropriate resolution number that made our carryover to justify to where the money was coming.
Is there a second?
I'll second all of that.
There was an amendment made to amend Resolution Nine to reflect the source of funding. It's been seconded. Any discussion? Okay, call the question. All those who are voting for the amendment indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And now I will entertain, or we'll call the question for the original resolution, but as amended. It's been moved and seconded. All those, without any further discussion, all those who would vote for Resolution Nine as amended indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The Resolution Nine as amended has been passed.
Agenda item number ten, a resolution authorizing the Economic and Community Development Department to acquire housing units in compliance with the requirements of Home ARP grant from the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development.
Whereas, the city's Economic and Community Development Department has been awarded a Home ARP grant from the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development in the amount of eight hundred twenty thousand, two hundred sixty-one dollars to serve individuals who are homeless, at risk of becoming homeless, clinging from domestic violence or sexual assault, or the threat of human trafficking and other similarly situated populations who are at risk of housing instability. And whereas, Economic and Community Development's plan includes the development of, development and operation of eight ready, excuse me, eight move-in-ready rental units for families and others for individual families depending upon the need. And whereas, Economic and Community Development intends to acquire and rehabilitate existing housing units that will permit qualified persons to stay in the units up to one year. And whereas, Economic and Community Development will provide supportive services to these residents to facilitate their move into permanent housing within the one-year window. And whereas, Economic and Community Development seeks council approval to proceed with acquisition of the needed housing units and otherwise comply with the terms and conditions of the grant. Now therefore be it resolved by the City Council of the City of Pine Bluff, Arkansas, that the Economic and Community Development Department is authorized to proceed with the process of acquiring the needed housing units that will satisfy the goals of the HUD grant and otherwise comply with the terms and conditions of the grant, subject to the council approving the final purchase price and acquisition of each property.
Move for adoption?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution Number Ten. Any discussion? No discussion, we'll call the question. All those in agreement to vote for Resolution Number Ten indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion has passed. And now, that might be a record so far this year. So I will go over the announcements for today. The first one is, the Pine Bluff Jefferson County Clean and Beautiful Commission invites you to their spring shredding event on Friday, May sixteenth, from eleven a.m. to one p.m. at Saracen Landing. Residents are encouraged to bring personal documents for secure onsite shredding. Please note, there is a limit of ten boxes per person. Item number two, the Arts and Science Center is offering an exciting lineup of events this month. From Miss Madkin's literacy class to yoga in the loft, there's something for everyone to enjoy. For event details and schedules, visit www.artx3.org. W W W A R T X, the number three, dot org. Item number three, Remix Ideas will be hosting an artificial intelligence summit on Thursday, May fifteenth. This event is free and will take place from nine a.m. to two p.m. at the Arts and Science Center located at seven oh one South Main in Pine Bluff, Arkansas. Discover how artificial intelligence can help grow your business. Item number four, the Pine Bluff Regional Chamber of Commerce will host its monthly luncheon from eleven-thirty a.m. to one p.m. on May seventh at the U A P B Business Support Incubator at six fifteen South Main. The guest speaker will be District sixty-four Representative Kenneth Ferguson of Pine Bluff. Lunch is fifteen dollars and will be catered by Greiderfield Restaurant. Lunch must be paid in advance, R S P P, to the chamber at eight seven oh five three five zero one one zero. Allison, I will be getting you my money for that Greiderfield lunch immediately following this meeting. Item number five, the University of Arkansas Pine Bluff will present Smokey Norful, renowned pastor, Grammy Award-winning recording artist, educator, and U A P B alumnus as speaker for its one hundred and seventy-first commencement. The graduation will be held on Saturday, May tenth, at ten a.m. at the Pine Bluff Convention Center. The procession will begin at nine forty-five a.m. For the safety and security of all attendees, U A P B will enforce a clear bag policy at the commencement. Y'all, I keep a clear bag in my car. Item number six, the Oasis of Pine Bluff Assisted Living Facility, seven thousand one South Hazel Street invites the community to join them in an open house and Memorial Day celebration honoring their veterans. The celebration will be held on May sixteenth from noon to three p.m. The Disabled American Veterans D A V Auxiliary will be presenting quilts to the nine veterans at the Oasis as part of the open house. There will also be food, music, and fellowship. Let's come together to honor those who served and sacrificed. For more information, call eight seven zero three nine five seven one one seven. Item number seven, join us as we honor Chief Sean Howells' retirement on Tuesday, May sixth, at six p.m. at the Pine Bluff Convention Center. Let's come together to celebrate and congratulate him on twenty-six remarkable years of dedicated service. And item number eight, the collector's office will be closed all day on Thursday, May eighth, while new computers are installed. If you have any questions, please call Angela Wilkins at eight seven zero seven three zero two zero two nine. And that concludes our announcements for this meeting. Okay, and we will adjourn. And now hear our public comments on non-agenda items. You will be, you'll have two minutes, those of you who are speaking this evening. And the first person on the list is Keon Farrell. Am I saying that right? Okay. And you're here to speak on code enforcement and zoning on private property.
Thank you again for having me. This matter is not new in front of this council. About last year, around this time, I brought the same issue up in regards to our right to form. Our Lakeisha Hill, our zoning inspector, has been informing the USDA NRCS in regards to high tunnels being placed on private property to where we have a prerequisite to acquire a zoning permit. The particular program that was rolled out, a federal program that was rolled out, was a competitive program. This prerequisite or prerequisite is only in Jefferson County amongst the state. So just to be clear, no other county within the state of Arkansas has this prerequisite, only Jefferson County, for a competitive federal program, which is, any one of us know you're not just going to get a city permit the following day and so forth. This particular thing disenfranchised not only me at the time, but others that I was working with. My situation currently has been addressed, but the others that I was working with are still being disenfranchised by this information. I propose an amendment to you guys tonight in regards to the ordinance that you've been providing to include the information, or exemptions, I should say, for the freedom of information that should be everyone is aware of. To have that ordinance absent that information, I think it does a disservice and it leads to misconception of what the actual ordinance should be in place for. I think that's my two minutes, and I thank you again for readdressing this matter, and I hope we can get some type of clarity on that.
Mr. Farrell?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Farrell, are you available for questions?
Yes, I do have a meeting set up with your office to address this and some other items.
Okay, good. Then my question is answered. Are there any other questions? Councilmember Brown?
Really trying to get clarity on it. I know I've seen you in here before, but what exactly, what were you having a problem with?
We have high tunnels or hoop houses that's being implemented for sustainable agriculture.
Oh, okay, okay. They covered greenhouses?
Yes.
Okay, I got you. Okay, I was trying to, you said some other term. I was like, what?
They call them high tunnels, hoop houses. All of them have their different features. But again, we were speaking specifically to high tunnels in regards to the federal program.
Got you.
It was confusing to see local municipalities intersecting in a federal program. It just gave too much appearance of overreach. And I was wanting to make sure that I was addressing that again with you guys to make sure that didn't happen in the future, because that disenfranchised me in regards to working with those individuals. We do C D I, consulting design, and implementation. So beyond my particular company, we help other people set up their infrastructure. And this definitely stopped them with the changes, dealing with the new administration and things like that, rolling back a lot of the funds. Consulting, design, and implementation.
Oh, okay, thank you. Oh, I see. Okay. Hold on, will you finish, Councilmember Brown?
Well, I was, my thing, I was wondering, so right now, as of the way, I guess, the ordinance is written, you cannot have a high tunnel or a hoop house?
It requires a city permit prior to you getting up to it. What I was stating with the federal program being competitive, it was a timeframe where you sign up to it. So for only Jefferson to have that prerequisite, that this is outside of all farmers and Jefferson County signing up, this is a federal program which was offering free high tunnels to those who had farm rights.
So is it a Jefferson County thing or is it a City of Pine Bluff thing?
It was told to me by, you have to have a zoning permit, which directly, Mr. Lakeisha Hill was in the thread with the email with the local D C.
So it must be something in our ordinance that prohibits it or restricts it?
I can forward the information that was sent to be more clear and exact.
Okay.
And I just would propose to you guys to amend that information to include the exemptions or the rights of farms, so we won't be misrepresenting the ordinance or overstating what the ordinance actually does, the very exemptions and the rights of farm apart from permits, ordinances, nuisance complaints, and all of those types of things. And I can forward that information over to you guys for more clarity.
Okay. And you meeting with the mayor's office this week?
Yeah, when do we meet?
I'm not sure what the lady's name is, the house of your own.
She's here, actually. Misha Thomas is here. We will maybe, I don't know if you have planned to stay until the end, but if not, I will find out from her. If you are, then we can solidify that and prioritize that so that whatever we need to do between now and the next city council meeting, we can make sure we do it. Okay? Councilman Lockett, I'm sorry, and then Councilman Mays, didn't you have a question?
The, I'm aware of this issue, and we have a task force that we are impending. I got to get, the only problem I have with task force is I got, it's too of a long road trying to wrap them up in order to, we have a task force to address this urban farming issue. What we're going to have to do in the task force, they have the zoning and the farming interest as task force members. The process of amending zoning ordinances, it has to be done through the planning commission. And then any alterations, you know, so we have, it's a process. It's a little more than just us amending it. We have to include the planning commission in the amendment of, and it's my desire to have the task force look at things like this particular federal program, because people have been coming to me for the last couple of years about it. But it's more than just a motion to amend the zoning process to get an exemption.
It's more than just a motion to do a lot of stuff around here, but I know that's a part of it, and I appreciate that. My question would be, does your task force, was it set up to address just this issue or urban?
Broad issues about doing farming within the city of Pine Bluff.
Wondering if, given that this is something that Mr. Farrell came last year about, and even though his issue, it sounds like, has been resolved, there are other people who may still be affected, and especially in this environment where federal funding is so tenuous and contentious right now. Wonder if you could attend whatever meeting we try to set up as soon as possible along with Larry Reynolds, ask him to attend, and maybe Ms. Hill, and just sort of do an all-hands-on-deck and see what needs to be done, and just try to move this particular item along as soon as possible, since there are so many other issues that your task force really kind of has before it to address.
May I add something to that? I'm also on the State Technical Committee in regards to agriculture. So I don't mind working with your task force to, you know, address any of these things in totality.
Well, and let me ask you this, too, before you answer. Is anything that could be done in the next few months, would that help the people who still remain? would that help the people who still remain affected by the current ordinance code? Or has that passed them by with this current federal cycle of, the grant cycle?
That's a great question, and the answer to that is, they've been passed along.
So it wouldn't matter for them right now if we changed anything?
It would matter in regards to what's coming down the pipe, but for that particular program that was out, those funders have already been allocated. And they're, they do it every year. This is why I wanted to address it before the season got started, if that makes sense.
So if, so instead of you meeting with me in particular, could you work with Councilmember Lockett and his task force? And whenever you all meet, then Councilman, you could invite myself and Ms. Hill and Mr. Reynolds to participate, since you?
Yeah, they are mandated to be on the task force.
Well, there we go.
So, so that, so that's, let's do this. Let me call Ms. Hill tomorrow to see when we, what we have to do now, the resolution has put the slots. I think it's about 13 people, from gardening enthusiasts to zoning people and that type of thing. What we gotta do, sit down right now and fill the slots with actual people. So let me call her tomorrow and see if we can get a meeting before the end of the week to start a time down, who exactly are going to represent the master gardeners? Who's going to represent zoning? Who's going to represent farmers markets and that type of thing? And before we move, let me get your number. Let's exchange numbers so we can be intentional about getting this meeting before the end of the week to fill this task force up, bring it to the next council meeting with the members that'll be on it, and then they'll be free to start making the recommendations as they see fit.
That sounds like a plan. I thank you guys for your time.
Oh, and Councilmember Mays?
Yeah, he was going to explain the acronym, you said?
CDI.
CDI, which is consulting, design and implementation, where we consult on what you guys have in mind or a particular client. We come up with a design that's best sustainable, and then we work out an implementing phase for far as projects and things of that nature.
Thank you.
I want to say one more thing, but despite the you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Farrell, I appreciate you.
It's to the ACO members back there. I want to recognize them, Demetrius and Mr. Bibbins and the rest of the ACO crew. They're sitting right here too. Raise your hand. Formerly ACO, it's ACO.
Thank you for being here tonight, yes. Okay. Brainard Divens? Is Brainard Divens? Is it Divens with a D? Okay, it's down here as Divens. Brainard Bivens is our next speaker, and he's here to speak about water and restrooms availability at parks.
Good afternoon. Our great representatives of Pine Bluff. I've just got a few comments and questions that I want you to ponder. First of all, does Pine Bluff actually love children? Water to drink in the park empowers the children to drink water? Restrooms availability during weekends, class reunions, birthday parties? There were fountains and restrooms in the parks when I grew up in Pine Bluff. Why not now? Not even porta toilets? How does a parent feel when the child has to go? What can children use? When you plan, you get thirsty. What, where are the drinks? Where are the water? Where is the water? What is the image of this? Is the image of Pine Bluff important as far as what visitors see when they go to the parks? What are other cities doing to help out the people in parks use the restroom or have water? The park hours of operation? Does a city have the will to put the restrooms, the availability of the restrooms, and also water in the parks? Also with recycling, does the city have any plans for household recycling? Do we actually need the large, big garbage trucks? Since our population is declining, that might be some of the problem with the potholes in the streets. Maybe they could use lighter trucks. I believe 50% of the trash can be recycled, and that would reduce the space used in landfills. Also, the high-speed chases in residential areas need to stop. I was a victim of witnessing a high-speed chase on West Second Avenue on a Saturday afternoon. The police car was totaled. I hear nothing about that situation, but I think it's very unsafe for the community, a residential area like West Second Avenue driving 80 miles per hour. It's really unacceptable. We're lucky that it wasn't lives lost. And that's more or less all I have.
Mr. Bibbins, Bibbins, correct, with B.
Yes.
Okay. And so you said, water fountains and restroom in the parks?
Yes.
Okay, so which park are you referring to that does not have a restroom?
As far as, none of the restrooms are available in the parks. They're closed.
Oh, okay, so we have the facilities, they're just locked?
They are locked, during hours that people can use them. And then even the one in Saris Landen closed at 4 o'clock and not open on weekends. And I think it's really ludicrous to have parks that don't have restrooms and water on restrooms, on weekends.
Okay.
So I was very curious as far as, would administration remove the water fountains and the restrooms? And what are their plans for replacing them?
Well, I'll go ahead and speak to what I can at this point. And I appreciate you raising this issue. My understanding is that there were COVID restrictions regarding water fountains. Now, I'm not sure what, I'm not sure what is available and what is not. Our focus right now, though, for the parks, has been to develop and redevelop programming in partnership and in our own system. As far as the restrooms, in order to ensure safety with the capacity that we have, that is the reason that they may not always be available. And we are, I just had a conversation with our parks director this morning about having enough capacity to work the weekends, because right now, it's a skeleton crew. But we're working on that. We're working with the resources that we came into the administration with. We're working with the council to enlarge our resources. But we have, you know, to work with the staff that we have and the hours that we have. And I know that there was, and I'll go ahead and speak to this. I know that there were a lot of comments, and there was concern about what may have seemed like a knee-jerk reaction to something that happened someplace else with regard to public safety. And I just want to say here now that the number one priority of this administration is the safety of all its people. And one of the three primary priorities is investment in our youth. And we are very clear that our park system of 22 facilities is there to improve the quality of life of all of, for all of our residents, but especially for our young people. And in so doing, we have to be mindful that their safety is priority. Because on my watch, we will never do anything or not do a thing so that someone's child goes to the park and ends up losing their life. And so when we see things happening in this state and we get warnings that everyone may not be privy to, we act on it. And as long as we have a limited number of people who are able to work the parks to ensure that there is safety and security and also cleanliness, you know, those are the things that we're working on. We're working on beautification, we're working on programs. But just trust and believe that by the end of this year, we will have planning and programs and a park system in place that is safe for everybody, that has a lot for people to do, whether we're doing it ourselves or we're doing it in concert with independent leagues, to make sure that, you know, we are fully utilizing our park system in all of its facilities, including the bathrooms.
Well, yes, I think it's important, but actually, not having water can be a health hazard also. And most of these issues occurred way before COVID, with the restriction of the restrooms and the uses of the water, so.
And I can't speak to that, but we will definitely follow up on this for sure. And aside from the water fountains, that may or may not already be available. And I mean, that's something that I've kind of had in my mind, not only at city hall, but really around the city in terms of water fountains and water that's available. So I think that that is an important thing to think about. We just have to prioritize. And, but we'll check into that. My understanding, though, is that there were certain restrictions put in place around COVID, and maybe we just have not regenerated what we can use since then, but we will. We will.
Thank you.
Mr. Bibbins?
Yes.
That's a good question, and I can assure you, Pine Bluff is going to grow and grow. The more we know, the more we grow. And that's what we, I have a lot of confidence in Pine Bluff. All we have to do is just keep going and going. Our parks, I mean, we're number seven in the state's population, something like that. We're not, what is, we're not, we're not, we're not doing bad. When the next census come out, which will be, you know, some years from now, a few years, and you'll see what I'm saying. Man, we're positioned well. I have all the confidence in the world in Pine Bluff and our leaders, because I'm one of them as well. And thank you for your input.
You're welcome.
Thank you so much, Mr. Bibbins. Mr. Lever? He's here to speak about city council meeting procedures.
Thank you, City Council, Mayor and residents. I'm going to quickly just tell you something, make a suggestion, ask something of you, and then I'll give you an example. The procedures of the city council, as I can see it, is ordinances are things that are final. Resolutions, and then on the ordinances, you say it three times normally, but on a resolution, you talk about it, and you pass it, or fail that night. And tonight, seven, eight, nine and 10 was not on the agenda. As I understand, it says that, what I read, it says that, real quickly, when a newspaper's in a city, it's better for the city because the people can be informed. But when you don't have a daily newspaper in your city, the media's absence sometimes hurts the productivity of the city when it comes down to the governing of the city. For example, again, the seven, eight, nine and 10 was not on the agenda. It was brought up tonight, and it was voted yea or nay tonight. So the people can't voice their opinion or make suggestions, and here I am. Downtown on the railroad was something that was added tonight. When you go across the railroad tracks, like I did this morning at 5 o'clock, at 5:00 a.m. this morning, I was carrying a portable cart carrying lumber, and my wheel got stuck in the tracks. So I'm a young, I'm not a young man, but I'm strong for my age, I think. So I picked my cart up, went to the next one, picked it up, and I had about eight to do, six or eight to do. But what about a person in a wheelchair? A person in a walker? Or a child that has their foot and it gets in the crack? So had I known y'all were going to talk about railroad and the grant that was obtained for such, I would have asked questions. Would the track improvement allow a person in a walker or a wheelchair or a child to walk safely across the railroad? Because there is no safe way without the possibility of your foot getting in between the tracks like my cart did today.
Mr. Lever?
Yes.
I'm sorry, your two minutes are up, but I will respond and say two things. We did make a change, so that any budget amendments would have to go through the resolution process, so that even in emergency situations or where timing is a factor, that they would be addressed on the floor with the resolution in the packet. And these packets are made available online. Maybe not in advance for things that are brought to the floor, but in any parliamentary procedure or body that operates on parliamentary procedures, there is always an opportunity for the body to hear something and make, take a vote from something brought by someone on the body to the floor, and I think that's what happened today. And the other thing that I would ask you to take, to look out for is that with our commitment to transparency and accountability, we will be looking at options and opportunities to better use our website and upgrade that, which will take a little bit of time, but also adopt other measures, as we have adopted some this year, to make information more available. But I think, you know, with the fact that our meetings are held online, we have, you know, and a possible audience of 300, people's ability, like yours, every, every meeting to come and speak on issues not on the agenda and on the agenda. I think that we're already moving ahead in, with the level of progress that I hope that people can have some confidence in.
My last few seconds, if you'd will, and that is?
I'm sorry.
I wouldn't have been able to talk about the safety of the railroads before the meeting if I didn't know about the meeting. Second, you say you care about the city, we all do. The United States Post Office in Pine Bluff, Arkansas, does not have a wheelchair parking space.
So let me, so we do have other people who are coming behind you. But I will say this, this today was about funding and budget amendments and not necessarily about safety and the considerations for disability services and access. But I think that with the vote we took today, we'll address some of what you're concerned about. And Councilmember Brown?
That's what I was going to say, is that this is for pedestrian crossing at the railroad site. So that will make it easier for an individual that's walking or whatever type of, if they're, you know, pulling something, makes it easier for them to be able to cross that railroad.
I understand, please, please forgive me. The United States Post Office does not have a place where handicapped person can park. As I saw an elderly white gentleman, 10 years my senior, walking across the street from the opposite side, I helped him. A gentleman, white gentleman, 10 years younger than me, said, I saw what you did. The post office employee came out to help me to escort the man in. So I got in a public transportation two years ago. I went to Whitehall, and they have two handicap parking spaces right out front, boldly placed, but we don't. I wrote a letter to the United States Post Office postmaster explaining all this to her. And the man that helped me said, you know, that lady called, asked me, were you okay? So am I okay for being concerned about the gentleman walked across the street? And two years later, there's still no handicap place to park in front of the post office? Your number one concern, you say, was safety?
Now, you know, we're not federal, but we do thank you for coming tonight, and we have some people behind you.
Yes, I do understand, but I was showing you how I'm concerned about the railroad tracks.
I hear you, I hear you. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, and next is Mr. Keith Johnson, who has comments about personal property. Good evening, Mr. Johnson.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I come to you all this evening to speak for me and my neighbors on 38th Street, where the AT&amp;T fiber optic guys is putting in that fiber optic line, that fiber optic line, and they're going across private property. I spoke with Ms. LaKeisha Hill, I spoke with the city attorney. I spoke with several city officials. No one can give me an answer as into who gave them permission to come across private property. They do not have permits, and none of them is licensed. So I'm trying to understand how, as a taxpaying citizen, that we have to require a permit if we just want to put a simple fence in our backyard? But these gentlemen do not have to have permits or license. They've busted gas lines and water lines on this street. I have pictures that I have forward to Mr. Dockett, who's the director over there, street department, and to Ms. Flowers. who's the director over there, Street Department, and to Ms. Flowers. Stephen Mays came out to assist me and my neighbors in this effort. And I thank him for that, as well as Ms. Flowers, who came out to the scene. I thank them also, her also, for coming out. But this is an issue because Mr. Dockett also told me and several neighbors that the city owns six feet of our property from the water main back up toward the house. And if the city owns six feet of that property, then why are we paying the taxes on it and taking care of that stretch of the land? See, so there's an issue there. I've also went to the water company to get a clarity on this on as what do the property owners, what is the property owners and what is the city? And the water company also instructed me that from that water main back up toward my house is mine. And if anything happens, anything breaks, anything goes wrong, I am responsible for that. The city is not. Anything from there back toward the street is the city. So to be honest about this now, while we paying taxes on a stretch of land that the city claims they own, see? And they supposed to be putting that fiber optic line in the easement in the alley. I talked to Ms. Hill in the zoning office. Ms. Hill informed me that they supposed to be in the easement. Now, I already know that where we're going with this is that you all are going to talk about that little stretch in front of the house by the curb where the water main is. And you cannot claim that as a easement because if that was so, then then the city took taxes from the taxpayers to put sidewalks in 15, 20 years ago, and the sidewalks are still not there. So where is that money? See? So the taxpayers is paying for a stretch of land that the city claimed they own. And the city is intruding and walking right across private property like they own it. And nothing is being done.
Mr. Johnson, the two minutes are up, but if I know that there may be some questions, and I just wanted to touch on a few things since you and I have had some conversation. And we also called some meetings to get some clarity about some things. And I first want to thank you for bringing this issue, for doing your homework so diligently. And and I do think that you raised some important questions and brought some important issues to light. So once we got the phone call and saw that that there were some concerns on the part of yourself and several residents, and I know that Mr. Dockett had been visiting with you, meeting with you, talking with you, and then I came out to the scene. I know I got a call, a couple of calls. So we're, we're all looking at it. The easement is an issue you're talking about. Access to property utilities, what constitutes a utility? The real estate property taxes, which you know are collected by the county. The city gets a very small portion. And I really would have to speak to our city attorney and probably others who are well-versed, certainly more versed than I am when it comes to easements and property lines and what's happening with broadband, which you know is funded by the state. And and what I learned after that, because I was very concerned when the subcontractor said that he didn't have to get a permit. And I thought like you, well, everybody else has to get a permit to do everything else. But AT&amp;T is operating under a franchise agreement, which I will send to you. They did send me that. And it's within that franchise agreement that affords them, it's sort of like a big permit that allows them to do certain things so that when it comes to installing the kind of infrastructure that we need so that there can be greater broadband access across the city, which we know we need, then they are able to do that. But the other thing that I think is the biggest point today, and I did have a meeting with three, a call meeting, with three AT&amp;T officials along with Representative Ken Ferguson, is the issue of notification. Because one thing we know for sure is that the residents on 38th Street who had complaints and who encountered subcontractors who came and did work, and then they said that they encountered markings from dialing, calling in the 811 that were not accurate, which caused the damage to the water line and in one case, the gas line, which is very dangerous. Those are things that I brought to bear and am in contact with the person who is over our region, as well as the person over the state and the governmental relations representative for AT&amp;T Arkansas. So they are aware of this. I have sent them your information along with two other residents on 38th Street, and they are supposed to call you directly. I also, subsequent to that meeting, got a copy of the door hanger that they are supposed to be putting on your door to notify you that they are coming and the work that is supposed to be done on the, under the basis of the franchise agreement and the work that they have to do to provide this infrastructure for all residents. Now, that's sort of where we are right now. And after this point, after today, you are supposed to hear from someone. And we are continuing our conversations because the other issue was what happens to make property owners whole if there has to be some digging in on your lawn, for example. And and that is supposed to take place, like where down the street from your house, where that digging was and all of that. They are supposed to make that right. They are supposed to make, if it's not what it was before they started work, it's supposed to be better. And that's what they told me. So I'm learning like others might be. And, you know, like I said, you started the process in asking questions that maybe a lot of people didn't have. We're not readily available to answer, but we are in the process. And I just wanted everyone to know that we are working to make sure that, you know, as this work is done throughout our city, that it's done right, that proper notification be given, that the work that is done is done according to the terms of the franchise agreement.
Yeah, but one of the problems is that they're trying to consider fiber optic as a utility, and it is not.
Well, I don't, I don't, no one said anything to me about what's a utility and what is not. I do know that there is state, there's state law has been passed and state funding to provide this infrastructure throughout the state. And I do know that cities like ours have entered into franchise agreements. Now, what that means to specifically address some of your concerns when you start talking about encroachment, easements, utilities, I don't know that yet. But I'm just telling you, where I have started was to address the permit issue, to address the notification issue, and to address the sort of post-work surface issues to make sure that people's properties are restored where there has been some digging. And the other thing that I made sure to relay early in my, in our conversation on Friday was the concern about what took place with the water company and the gas company and the lines that were.
Covered up.
Well, before it was covered up, just the damage to them.
Correct.
And I did relay how they were covered up. So I just kind of wanted to put that out there, that these conversations are ongoing. But I've been very clear that, number one, people have to be appropriately notified. Number two, I did get a copy of the franchise agreement, and we'll be sharing that with our city attorney so that we are all clear on who can do what and what can't be done under the terms of that agreement. And and I'll just, I'll stop there because I know that there might be some other members of the council who have questions. And hold on just a second, Councilmember Mays, because Councilmember Holcomb, or was it Lockett? Holcomb, Holcomb had a question.
And he said, this was done on your property?
It was done on everybody's property on 38th Street. The whole street is tow up. They broke two gas lines and two water lines. None of the guys are licensed plumbers. None of them are licensed carpenters. They didn't have permits, just like Ms. Just like Ms. Flowers just said. The water company, Liberty, was called out to look at the hole where they had busted a water line. And the gentleman from Liberty told them to do not cover the hole up because that water line has to be inspected by a licensed plumber to make sure that what they're putting down in there is going to hold. Because as everyone knows, that that pipe in the ground is a different pressure when it's in your house. You cannot put CBP pipe and then let you go by from Lowe's, which is what they did. But they covered it up anyway and moved on, like the gentleman hadn't said anything to them. See, the issue is that the city has allowed, and I keep going back to the cities because that was, that is what they was relating to me. The city has allowed them to come in here and do these things, and there's no checks and balances. See, for who's doing what or who's doing whoever. No, no city official had come out to see the damage that was done until I made a phone call to Mr. Stephen Mays. Even all the men in my ward didn't even come out. See, Stephen Mays is forming a different ward. See? And that's a shame that our city officials is not concerned.
Well, let me say this, that 38th, that's my ward.
Okay, well, you didn't come out. What more can I say?
Was it? I didn't come out because I wasn't notified.
Do you, do you have a car?
Do I have a car?
Yes, sir.
Yes, sir.
It's simpler for you to get out and ride your ward and see what's going on in it.
I ride it all the time.
Well, you couldn't have all them trucks. I have pictures here that I gave to the Ms. Flowers and Mr. Dockett. I had enough trucks and cars from Summit and Liberty on my street that it looked like a car show. So it, I don't know what you missed.
Yes, sir.
I will say with all due respect to Councilmember Holcomb and to all the members of.
You can't speak for Councilmember Holcomb, you can't speak for him.
I'm about to speak for myself as a council member. You know, we do have, you know, full-time jobs in the daytime, and it's difficult for us to ride every block every single day. That's why we appreciate opportunities like this. We do need people, we're not superheroes. We do need people to bring things to our attention.
Trust me, trust me, I'm not jumping, I'm not jumping on you, Mr. Holcomb.
You're fine, you're fine, and I'm not making this.
Yeah, I understand, I understand. Everybody up here have a job. I get it. But we got to be more concerned for the citizens. We got to be. That's my point.
Can I get your phone number?
You sure can.
Yes, sir.
It's 870.
870.
489-6561.
6561.
Yeah, Keith Johnson.
Yes, sir.
But it's, but see, I'm not just speaking for me now. I'm speaking for that whole block area. I'm speaking for all of my constituents in there, all of my neighbors in there.
May I speak?
Councilmember Mays?
Yeah. I mean, we got to, we got, we have to make sure that just because they running the utility company, they just can't come on somebody's property and just take over the person's property. They, they really made a mess out there in that neighborhood. And it never be the same because, see, a week or two from now, that stuff going to level out again, and that dirt going to sink. And if they didn't do it right the first time, it's going to be leaking again. And that's what's going to happen. And you'd be, you'd be calling the city council again about what happened. They should have notified the people before they would have just started digging. How do they have that much authority to go over these people's property?
Well, they really, they really don't. And I think that what happens is when subcontractors are hired, and that's part of the conversation I had today. Sometimes they take liberties that aren't theirs. And sometimes there may be a language barrier. Sometimes they may be people from out of state and definitely from out of town. And those are some of the issues that we will be working on and working out with AT&amp;T. But for sure, we are in contact. And and I just wanted to make you know that, and I wanted to thank you for coming. And we'll be in contact and stay in contact for sure. Is there anybody else with?
I have. And that does not need to happen again where they digging. They went back and covered it up when we started telling the people to come out. They started covering the hole up.
Well, they, they told Ms. Flowers that, they told her, they told her that they did, they told her.
And see, that was wrong because.
She has firsthand knowledge of it.
Yeah, but that was wrong when they did that. They covered it up and then uncovered it and then covered it back.
It was wrong, and we have reported that to the people who were paying them. That's what I wanted to clarify. These were, these were third-party contractors. We reported that, and we're working with AT&amp;T to make sure that it doesn't happen again. And I think that the very first priority is property owners slash residents slash citizens slash voters slash taxpayers have to be notified for whatever is going to happen. And that's a broader issue that I think we need to work with. And I'll stop here, though, with with our legislative delegation because there are other utilities that have sent third-party contractors out and come to, come to, came to my parents' door saying, we're going, you know, turn this off and work on this. And then, and we don't know who they are. They just say they're representing this particular utility, and you trust it. But it really shouldn't be that, right? There really should be greater transparency, clarity, notification, accountability. Because after the work that my parents experienced, their bill almost doubled. And nothing happened, they just got to pay it. And if that's happening to them, that's happening to other people, so.
That's what me and the neighbors are looking at now. We don't know how much of that gas, because the gas was leaking for, I think, about six or seven hours before Arclaw could get out there and then the water. We don't know how much of that bill are they going to forward on to us.
Let's, let's do this, though. Mr. Johnson, let's, let's reach out to Summit, and we'll do that through Representative Ferguson. Let's reach out to Summit in advance of, we won't wait for the bill. Let's let them know that this happened, and let's let them make some adjustments before you get your bill or when you get your bill, knowing that there will be some adjustments made to make residents on that street whole. And I'm going to make a note, and I'll call him on my way home so that we can start working on that now. Are there, Councilmember?
Summit and Liberty.
That's right, that's right.
So, so, so attorney, can we legislate something to have them? They just can't come in this town and dig holes and stuff.
No, there's nothing we can legislate, that's why we're working with our delegation.
Now, that's not right, because they don't ever put the dirt back like it was. Two weeks from now, that dirt going to sink, and it's going to be.
There, let me say this, Councilmember. They are under the authority, many of them, under the Public Service Commission, which is a state entity. So that is not our authority per se. But that's why we have to go back and look at our franchise agreements and those kinds of agreements that we can work with on our level. But we do have relationship with our legislators. We have our own relationships with the utilities and the broadband service organizations or companies. So we are in good stead to do something about this. But I want us, we have two more people on the list to hear from. And that is, we're going to hear from Mr. Dockett briefly. And then we will hear from.
You hear from me this evening?
Ms. Lori Walker Galache briefly. Thank you again, Mr. Johnson, appreciate you.
Thank you all.
Mr. Dockett. Sorry, yeah, they were supposed to be. So y'all, Mr. Dockett is here to talk about the the monthly free dump day at Heston Stadium. And it won't be long, but go ahead, Mr. Dockett.
First of all, good evening.
Good evening.
We don't know where to start with this, but I'm going to go ahead and start from this area right here.
I'm sorry, before you get started, this is in response to the gentleman who came last meeting with concerns about tree companies being able to dump, bring, not branches, but.
Liam is in so long.
Reverend Maxwell, that's right. So he came to offer his concerns and since then had been in contact with several of us. So Mr. Dockett was going to briefly share the concerns of the department and sort of what they are doing and how we can help address some, some, clarify some things and make sure that people who rely on this service and use this service can continue to with information.
Okay, my main concern is the decrease of overtime, the overtime line item in the budget. Please excuse me because I really don't like speaking too much. Okay, since 2022, the budget line item for overtime has gone from $60,000 to now $38.5,000. And expect, and except for last year, every year the budget has been maxed out. So basically what that's saying, in 2000 and. So basically what that's saying, in 2022, the actual line item budget was actually set for 52,898 dollars. And other than that, the whole thing was maxed out 100%. And 2023, it was actually, uh, adjusted for 60,500. The whole thing was maxed out plus, uh, another $3,000.
How many? How many more?
Uh, $3,000 more.
$3,000, okay.
So in 2024, the actual budget was set at, uh, $50,000. With that being said, that did not get maxed out, it reached 77%, which was 38,429 dollars. This year, the actual budget was set at 3,000, oh, 38,555 dollars. And as of right now, we're at 27%. But that's not to say what all is gonna happen between now and then where overtime is gonna be used. Out of that right there, about $16,000 is actually being, um, not say set aside, but actually is gonna be used this year for the, uh, dump site. Uh, along with that, there are other items or other projects we're doing that's gonna require overtime to be used as well, too. So my concern really, like I said, is to try to stay within limits of the overtime for the guys to use to actually take care of things. Because I don't want to have to do like it's been done in the past where, uh, from my rec- from, from me remembering that, uh, certain things come around with certain line items, when you run out of money, you just gotta stop it altogether. For example, like working on machines and stuff at the, uh, tree department, when it comes down to September, October, November, if the money in that line item is gone to work on heavy equipment, nothing can be done until we actually next, um, next year rolls around to get money for it.
Oh, Mr. Docket, let me say this real quick. If that ever happens to the point where equipment is not working and you don't have the funds, I would rather you come to the council and ask before you just stop working on stuff.
Okay, see, I have no problem with that. But like I said, in the past, that's what has been, that's what happened.
And I know, I know, I, I guess maybe they don't wanna come to the council because they feel like maybe the council's gonna say no, but I would much rather know what's going on and be able to fund it than you just say, we're just not gonna work on anything because we're getting a new budget in two months, so we won't fix anything for two months.
Okay.
I would, we would much rather know, I'm pretty sure the rest of the council would agree to that. Um, if, I would like to know if you're at that point.
Well, I understand that, but going on from previous, uh, directors and so on and stuff, that's what's been happening.
Yeah.
All right. Also, too, to be honest, um, I recommend a dump day really be done the first and third Saturday of every month. I agree with the, uh, purpose for and so on and stuff. But like I said, the only issue is, is actually, um, having the funds to actually do it and so on. Um, originally, my understanding that the dump day was actually sponsored by, um, previous Chairman, uh, Chair, uh, Alderman's, uh, Steve, Stephen Shiner. Is it Stephen Shiner? Yeah. Stephen Shiner and Ivy Whitfield. Uh, with that being said, there was no, uh, legislation or no, um, resolution actually put in place for that. So basically, it's just a word-of-mouth agreement with them, also with, uh, the property owner, Dale Dixon.
Did we do that? Yeah, we did a resolution.
I think there was a resolution. What we, what we found is, was that there's no written agreement to clarify what is collected and what is not. And so when, um, we encountered from, um, Reverend Maxwell, you know, who, what can be collected, and then the street department, how many, um, um, branches and leaves and how that's collected and what can't be collected. I think that's something that we need to and, and can work out, um, for specifics so that when we send out these, you know, flyers and people think, oh, okay, good, I can go, like whether we limit people to one dump, um, per cycle or, or per dump day versus coming back and forth, because some people come back and forth several times, some people have larger trailers, so we need to probably identify, you know, up to what size trailer can you loot, can you use to fill up? Those are the kinds of things that, um, Director Docket and I talked about really all weekend and, and including today, that we can work on leading up to the next council meeting so that, you know, um, we, so that there can be clarity. And we've even talked about something that he said he learned from the previous director that was a, was a conversation but didn't pan out, and that is to go ahead and just create a line item in the budget so that we're not constantly using overtime, um, labor and it can be planned as a part of what the department does. So I, I don't know what that looks like exactly, but I am for all of that, and I want to thank Mr. Docket for, um, addressing this issue and his creativity and trying to help us figure out how to address it.
Mr. Docket, did you say you were gonna try to have it on the first and the third Saturday?
I would like to have it on the first and the third, but like I said, that's just something that's coming, you know, in the near future and so on, so we can actually look into it going into next year, maybe.
Okay. Um, but in the meantime, are we gonna?
I think what we're gonna do is in the meantime, just do it once a month as it is, and in September, when we start looking at the budget and to decide what the line item is, we can figure out, do we hire somebody or contract or whatever, but not pay, because I think the, with, with the numbers that Mr. Docket shared, it's, it became, the average pay for the workers there is $22 an hour. Well, with overtime, it becomes $33 an hour. So we could get probably more bang for our buck in doing something like this a couple of times a month and where people don't feel like, okay, I gotta put everything I need to and go several times. If they know it'll happen a couple of times, then we can do it with labor that is not time and a half. So, I mean, those are some of the things we're working out, but we can work on that during budget time, and in the meantime, still offer it as we've been offering it, but based upon the agreement that we can work out between now and the next, um, city council meeting and adopt that agreement, uh, with Heston Stadium, um, so that everybody's more clear about what we're doing and how we're doing it.
And maybe possibly having it not on a Saturday, maybe having it on another day during the week.
Well, now, let me just interject this now. Um, I think this is too much to entertain at this particular time, and really we would like to have some input at the Public Works Committee, which the street department falls under, so we could have a little bit more time and a little more concentrated effort. Uh, this is the first time it's been brought up, anything about this, uh, when it was proposed, they didn't seem to be an issue, uh, but I, I hadn't been included in whatever conversations it, it is.
It just was, it stemmed from Mr. Reverend Maxwell and then calls this week and to see what would be done, because I think there was a reaction on the part of the street department. And kinda in looking at the resolution, I think the original resolution that sort of laid the groundwork for this happened, um, with, um, the, the first council, uh, member Holcomb. And I, I think I saw that piece of, that resolution, um, from Madam Clerk, but I, I, to that I say yes. I think whatever we come up with, um, to put in writing and solidify what has been kind of plastered on the flyers and people have come to expect, we can bring that before the committee, before we bring anything in the way of a resolution before the full body.
May I say this? We're, we're talking about trash.
Well, we're talking, let me answer your question. You said right, trash, limbs, leaves.
But that's, I'm just saying, that should be easy to, at one time, at one time, we had, we didn't share our dump day, we had our, our dump day in Pine Bluff only. But see, now
It is in Pine Bluff.
Yeah, but you got, why, all everybody trying to come in and, and take it from us and, it was easy.
Well, that's a good point, too, because something that came up in our conversation was when people come to dump to show their license so that we don't get people from all over, that it's a service that is provided for free to Pine Bluff residents. So, I mean, there are a lot of little things that we're talking about, and we don't have to belabor it and try to figure it all out right now, but we just thought it was important that given the comments and concerns of Mr. Maxwell and others, that, um, Mr. Docket come before you and talk about the concerns of the department and give you some hard numbers so that you can know kind of what he's dealing with, and just let you know that we're working on it and we'll try to bring something, um, before the council and the commi- then Public Works Committee in the meantime, before the next meeting.
Let me say this here, Re- Reverend, uh, Docket, he, he comes in
Reverend Docket?
No, 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 not the Docket. But what they doing, they, they have other people in the community, the senior citizens that's trying to, that need to go to the dump or whatever.
Councilman, let me do this, because I, I need to tell you something you may not know about after this, and we still have to hear from Director, uh, Walker Galachee on that help, because sometimes it's not help, it's a whole business.
I, I understand, I see.
Okay, all right. Thank you so much, Mr. Docket. And, and finally, last but not least, Director Lori Walker Galachee, thank you.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I come to bring you an update on Retail Strategies, who is the city's retail consultant. Uh, last year, we did, um, offer a RFP for proposals to be submitted for a retail consultant. There were three proposals submitted, and the review committee selected Retail Strategies, which is a firm out of Alabama. The council approved a three-year contract for them at $45,000 a year, and so we are at the close of their first year. And I have some good news to report, that throughout the year, um, they made contact or outreach to 161 retailers. And they are in constant contact with 41 retailers who are going back and forth that are interested in coming into the area. They, um, have contacted 14 brokers, have follow-up and, uh, interest responses of 19, and six sites have actively been presented, franchise developer introductions, they've done three of those, and we have one new retailer as a result of their effort, and that is Roses out on Harding. So Roses is projected to generate 210 to 260,000 dollars in local sales tax. Uh, so that's a pretty good ROI for a $45,000 investment. And again, we are coming up on the anniversary of their contract, and so I have submitted the invoice to our finance director to make sure that that can be, um, paid. So as a result, I, I mean, also, the mayor asked me to introduce the team, and unfortunately, some of them left already, but we do have one who's still here, and I wanted to recognize, uh, Sarah Price. Other team members are Larry Reynolds, Lakeisha Hill, Jamal Gordon, Michael McCray, Angelisa Henry, and of course, our, uh, Councilmember Glenn Brown is part of our committee as I do have a, a copy of the report that they submitted today, it's for, um, make sure that you guys get copies of it for tonight.
Any questions?
Yeah. Can you submit that electronically?
Um, yes, I can email it.
Okay.
All right, great. All right, thank you so much.
And, and let me say this, not you, thank you. Reverend Maxwell does a good job moving it, moving the stuff to the, uh, dump. He does a great job, and I think we need to support him because he keeps the neighborhood.
Councilman, let me talk to you after this, we're gonna go ahead and adjourn, because this is a marathon, record-setting meeting, so I've been in so far. Thank you all so much, we adjourn.
I, I know what you're saying.
What's up? Leave you something down in there?
Reverend Maxwell is great, but he was running businesses.
Oh, like the poker, let me, uh, yeah. Okay. Yeah, I know. She says she gonna do it. Yeah, Mama was helping to do some